So for each case, there is a public hearing. We ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve two minutes as rebuttal. We ask that the public keep their comments to two minutes unless they are representing an organization or group, and they may have five minutes. And Mr. Shawn Alexander is our official timekeeper here. Pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that in final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via statutory writ or certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ or certiorari to the specific decisions of the Historic Zoning Commission. Do we have a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes?
Approve.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
No.
All opposed? Okay, meeting minutes are approved. First is consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requires that the item be removed from the consent agenda. And my understanding, Paul, there is one that has been removed.
Yes, sir. 3105 Overlook has been moved to new business. The remainder of the consent agenda is 1511 Elmwood Avenue, new construction of an outbuilding with a setback determination, 312 Broadway, new construction addition, rehabilitation, 110 Pembroke Avenue, new construction of an addition, 4,000 Cambridge Avenue, new construction addition with a setback determination, and 2619A Ashwood Avenue infill, new construction infill. Staff has reviewed these projects and find that they meet the design guidelines.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Paul? Okay, thank you.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented with the item 3105 Overlook Drive.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and we'll start with that one. 3105 Overlook Drive.
Actually, if we may, we'll start with previously deferred items, if you don't mind, and then we'll take 3105 Overlook as the first under MHCC actions, if that's all right.
That is fine with me. So that will be 114 South 17th Street?
This is an application to demolish an existing structure and construct a new infill and detached carport. The project requires a setback determination. The existing building at 114 South 17th Street is a one-story building constructed circa 1940. It is situated at the rear of the lot of 1621 Holly Street. The house at 1621 Holly is used as a duplex, so there are currently three units on the lot. The codes department considers both the duplex on Holly Street and the residence at the back of the lot to be nonconforming legal uses, so codes does permit three residential units on this lot. As far as the existing building, its style, form, and detailing do not match the historic context of the neighborhood, and staff finds that the structure does not contribute to the architectural or historical significance, and that its demolition meets the design The proposed infill will be in the appropriate, excuse me, the approximate location of the existing house to be demolished. It is shifted slightly to the right of the site, closer to the alley, which allows for more room between it and the Holly Street house. The proposed building is approximately 33 1/2 feet wide, 30 feet deep. It is slightly narrower and shallower than the context, where the houses range from about 35 to 38 feet wide and 44 to 65 feet deep. Comparing the two houses on the lot, the new structure's footprint is about 2/3 of the size of 1621 Holly Street. The infill will be approximately 27 feet from the front property line, which is about 6 feet forward of the house across the alley at 112 South 17th Street. The front wall of the new construction, however, will be 4 feet behind the 17th Street facade of the Holly Street house. Staff's analysis is that the front setback is appropriate because the lot is shallow and it is behind the Holly Street house. The infill does require a setback determination. It will be 5 feet from the alley and 5 feet from the west property line dividing 1621 Holly and 1619 Holly Street. Staff's review is that these setbacks are appropriate because they shift the house away from the Holly Street, 1621 Holly Street, towards the alley, and because the shallowness of the buildable area here makes locating the structure farther away from the west property line impractical. In addition, the existing structure is situated less than 20 feet from that property line at the rear. The proposal includes a one-story, one-bay carport located to the left of the new house in between 1621 Holly and the new residence. This carport building meets all base zoning setbacks. The proposed infill will be 1 1/2 stories with a ridge height of 23 1/2 feet above grade. It will have an eve height of approximately 13 feet above grade and a 2-foot foundation. The proposed height matches the historic context. The infill will be appropriately shorter by about 2 feet than the house on Holly Street. The house is oriented face 17th Street with a front porch located toward the front left corner. To meet the guidelines for orientation, staff recommends a walkway be added connecting the house to the street. The materials have all been approved by the commission in the past. The primary cladding will be fiber cement siding with a 5-inch reveal, split-faced concrete block with the foundation, and the roof will be architectural shingles. The side and rear facades, the infill will have a side gabled roof with a 712 slope. The front facade will have a gabled dormer inset 2 feet from the wall beneath. The windows on the infill meet the historic proportion and rhythm of openings. The carport will have similar materials. These are photos for context. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the project with the following conditions: that staff review the color of roofing, windows and doors; that the finished floor height be consistent with the finished floor heights of adjacent historic houses; a walkway be added from South 17th Street to the front porch of the proposed new building; and that utilities will be located to minimize their visibility from the street.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Any questions for staff? All right, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and speak regarding this project? State your name and address.
Rebecca Devane, and I represent Shamrock Homes. Peggy Newman was going to present and is sick or indisposed, so I hope I can answer any questions. In review, there was a couple of things I just wanted to state. One was that the HVAC unit is not on the current site plan, but it has been recommended to put near or at the rear. Looking at the site plan, I don't really have a whole lot else to add. So, just, I guess that the Holly Street home was apparently built around 1918 and is more consistent with the surrounding houses. The house that we are proposing to rebuild or reconstruct really looks significantly different. I don't know how much you can see that from the photograph, but it looks very different from all the surrounding houses, whereas the new house, or new design, as Peggy designed it, fits in character much better. And we hope to be able to add the front porch. That was a recent design change, to add a front porch, and also trying to be consistent with historic design guidelines. So, that's really all that I have.
And so basically, you guys agree with the staff recommendations? Okay.
Yes, we've already worked to accommodate historic design guidelines in the design process.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I do have a question. The first, I couldn't hear you, the first thing you said that was not included on the site plan?
The HVAC unit.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Would anyone in the public, open public hearing, would anyone in the public like to speak regarding this project? Please come forward and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Jason Quorum, and I live at 1619 Holly Street, right next to this project. My side yard shares their, I guess, rear yard, side yard, their house, the back of their house. And with the new development, it severely affects my property. And I would just like to put this in the context of the state statute code 137208 to A through C regarding nonconforming multifamily, multi-unit developments. This states that the builder's building is destroyed by natural causes, but they expanded or built beyond what was existing, then if it got destroyed again, they would lose all their protections, they would forfeit all their protections in the future. So that means it would go back to base zoning. And also, in the Metrozoning Code of 1740-660, nonconforming structures, repairs and alterations may be made to nonconforming structures provided there's no increase in the degree of nonconformity. And I feel like the reduction of the rear yard, which is, I guess, technically the side yard, but right now it sort of has a rear yard, but you're facing 17th, so you're, and even the drawings say rear yard, you're making it going from 12 feet down to 5 feet off my, off the side property line. And then you, well, I'll get something else later. So, yes, you're increasing the degree of nonconformity, in my opinion. And then, in the context of the lot, they kind of, the site plan that I have shows the Holly Street, but they kind of cut that off of the slide up there. Kind of, I mean, I don't have a problem with development in high support.
It's time.
It's been 10 minutes already? Oh, I got 2 minutes, geez. Okay, well, that sucks.
Yeah, we got your email, too.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to speak regarding this project? Yep, please come forward and state your name and address.
My name's Jack Matthews. I live at 1701 Holly Street, which is the house on the left side in the middle. We're across the street from the proposed construction. Initially, I was against it because of the houses that have appeared in Lachlan Springs, but after seeing the plans, I totally support it. We've lived across the street from that house for 27 years, and it'd be very nice to see it upgraded in the way it's being done. So that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there others? Okay, thank you. Closed public hearing.
I have just a question. Was it subdivided when the newer house was built?
No, it's my understanding that it's legally nonconforming, or, to tell you the truth, I don't know what the official wording for it is, but we don't deal with use and whether it's allowed to be there or not allowed to be there, or how it's used. It is legal for them to build a new building there. So, your charge today is just to look at the design.
I'm glad you, um...
Well, I mean, what difference is this than an outbuilding?
Because it's a dwelling unit.
Because it's what?
It's a dwelling unit. It's a house. It's not just a garage or shed.
One that has been demolished, okay.
Right.
Just with this one, as was pointed out, there's two 1619s, so the one on the left is the 1621 on this slide.
On the site plan, the map.
The site plan that's up?
The one at the bottom is not labeled correctly. That's 1621.
Okay, just for the record. Thank you.
And if I could follow up on that, the question about the nonconformity. The nonconformity is strictly in use, is that correct?
That is all outside of our purview, and I am hesitant to answer those kinds of questions. I don't know how it's legal, but I know that it's legal.
But it's not, it's not nonconforming to, well, maybe my question's for Susan. Can you tell us how the property is currently nonconforming, and whether it's use, or if it's bulk regulations, or how?
It's my understanding that the, that the property is nonconforming, and that there are three dwelling units on the property instead of what would normally allow one or two dwelling units on the property. The staff report indicates that it has gone through the Board of Zoning Appeals and has gotten the requisite approval. They would be the board that would determine whether that's a proper use and whether, after the structure has been demolished, it could be rebuilt. Given that they've already received that approval, that's really the end of the inquiry on that particular issue. And it is, my understanding that it is the use that was in question, not the structure.
Okay, so, and I'm asking the question partly, I think, because of the one speaker who brought up size, in his email brought up the size of the home being larger than the existing one. But since it's only use that's nonconforming, essentially what's there now isn't necessarily violating any bulk regulations or anything else that would, that would cause us to be approving something that increases its inconformance?
Increases the degree of nonconformity?
Is that the right word?
It's called.
I found it.
No, you could, I mean, I think the board has to look at the two critically issues, the critical issues before, and that are, those are the design issue and the issue of setbacks. And that's really the end of the inquiry for this particular board.
Thank you.
I was a little confused on the gentleman who spoke about the setback. Which one is he concerned about?
It's, I believe it's the new rear setback for the new building, which is truly a side setback, because it's the side lot line for that lot.
Yes.
Yes, right through there. So, that, you know, not that you have to follow bulk standards, but that would be 5 feet. So, for instance, if this house were not here, the owner of Holly, the house facing Holly Street could add on, and that could be 5 feet from the property line. They could build a garage in this location, which could be 3 feet from the property line. So it is within what you see normally on these standard lots.
Any, any more, anything about the design? Oh, did you have something, Hunter?
No.
Okay, even better. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll make the motion we approve staff recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. So, 3105 Overlook Drive.
This application is to construct a new front dormer and a side and rear addition. Its date of construction, the house that's there now, is a typical Cape Cod form that meets the historic context of this part of the Hillsborough West End Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay that was developed between 1940 and 50. Staff has had to recommend disapproval as the project is too massive for the existing house. The side portion of the addition doesn't sit back to the midpoint, as you've required in the past for side additions, and the midpoint would be about 12 feet, and this is only setback 5 feet. The guidelines state that side addition should be subservient in height and massing to the historic house, but the addition adds a second level above the one-story portion of the house. Currently, the house looks like a typical Cape Cod-style home with a garage to the right and an enclosed connector in between, but the house will now look like a historic home with a second home attached to the right side, which doesn't meet the guidelines for rhythm of, the rhythm of spacing and the scale. The addition wraps the rear corner of the house, which changes its original roof form, something that the commission is typically not allowed because it doesn't meet the design guidelines for roof form. A central dormer is proposed to be added. In the past, you've only allowed for new dormers where there's no evidence of historic dormer on secondary elevations, because conjectural architectural elements are not to be added if they create a false sense of history. The two gabled dormers on either side of the central doorway are typical of a Cape Cod house configuration, and the proposed third central dormer interrupts that original form. Front additions do not meet the design guidelines for additions. The proposed wall terrace at the front of the house does not meet the design guidelines as it adds a conjectural feature to the house and obscures significant architectural features of the Cape Cod's front facade. In addition, it alters the perceived orientation of the historic house by minimizing the original primary entrance and giving more prominence to the second entrance on the side. Staff recommends disapproval of the project, finding that the dormer and the side addition do not meet sections 2B1 for height, scale, roof shape, and orientation, and 2B2 for additions. Staff does not recommend approval with conditions, since a redesign is really necessary to meet the design guidelines and not something that we thought could happen at the meeting today. But of course, we're happy to continue to work with the applicant to come up with other solutions, and they can propose a new design to you.
Okay, thank you, Robin. Any questions for staff? Okay, thank you, Robin. It's the applicant here and would like to speak regarding the project.
Thank you. I'm Van Pond. I'm the architect. My address is 1802 Primrose Avenue, Nashville, 37212. Thanks for taking time to look at this. This is a atypical project. I've got some handouts for them, Robin. Were this lot dead level? Were it relatively square? There would be a different solution proposed to you right now. This lot slopes up fairly intently. It's got about a 16% slope across the lot from the drive up. We are bound by that and not wanting to create a subterranean addition toward the rear. The house is a minimal Cape Cod. There are, along its street, examples of correct Tudor or Tudor Revival, as well as colonial houses. There are also examples of houses very similar in character to this house. After much discussion and much, shall we say, figuring out over two different designs for this project in the last two weeks even, since we first submitted the project to the staff, we've redesigned it to their comments as best the owner would accept. We'd like to ask for your consideration of a few things. And I'm going to talk about the things that we feel are very workable with staff in a, without a full redesign. There's two pieces there. One is the walled terrace at the front that, according to the staff recommendation, reoriented the front door of the house. The house currently is a two-family house, is going to be taken back to a single family. The central door that locates itself between the garage or kitchen addition with the triangular windows, which was probably done in the late 1980s, has become the central entrance for the main house. The original front door is the entrance to the apartment upstairs. We actually are reconfiguring the inside of the house so that that door can be more of a front door in function. However, in use, where the driveway is, we're not really going to cut into rock and change that orientation. It's kind of an existing piece. We feel like we can work with staff to minimize the walled amount of the terrace. The owners do want some ability to be out in front of their house. There's already some kind of rock terrace things going on, and reveal more of the house. It's a very simplified character of house. We'd like for you to think about that. We are happy to obscure the secondary entrance and not make it such the prominent as is depicted in the site plan and the elevations at this point. The other piece is the central dormer. While we do feel like adding a central dormer does add some architectural rhythm to this house and gives it a little bit more pride, we do understand the concept of not wanting to Disneyfy a house that might not have been as good a house as the ones that are near it on the street. You've got pictures of the whole context kind of along the side that this sits on, which is Hillside Drive and Overlook Drive, as well as the houses across the street. It's a varying context with varying ages of house construction. We do feel like removing that dormer might be a possibility. The owner does not oppose that terribly. Those things said, I think those are fairly easy things to talk through. The other pieces are the side addition. We don't have a lot of space in the rear. You can see from the side elevations kind of how intensely the slope does go up. We have buried about, kind of about 26 feet back in the rear for the rear addition, and really do need to do a side addition to the garage. In the original discussions with staff, we did discuss that, you know, the garage was semi-contributing or a later addition. We could possibly violate that in some ways or add to it. That is what we proposed. What you see in front of you is a slightly modified elevation that actually brings the ridge of that garage roof down to, consistent with a roof we would like to put over the flat roof of the connecting entry hall, or what was the screen porch some years ago. It's no longer a screen porch. It's completely enclosed space. This ridge does sit down 2 1/2 feet from the existing ridge. We do want to kind of keep this, we are very conscious about the scale here, but we can't really go back a whole lot more than we have and provide for circulation both upper and lower. We have, from our previous and initial submittal, taken a full wall above that hyphen piece out, subsumed that under a roof, and put a small dormer in. We'd like your consideration on that. It would allow kind of second-floor circulation to happen without having to completely reconfigure the interior of the house. The existing stair that accesses the second-floor apartment is 31 inches wide, and it's a little bit difficult to get me up as opposed to furniture. So we'd appreciate your consideration on that. I think that concludes my presentation. I'm glad to answer questions at your leisure. Thank you.
Any questions right now?
Could I, could I just ask the applicant to summarize the last portion of your presentation, which are kind of the items that, that, I think the two that you mentioned that were, you felt like you could work through with staff, were the dormer and the front?
Wall terrace.
Right, the terrace. Could you sort of just summarize?
The last two bullet point items are, we would like to add a...
Maybe along with that, just in the ones that you are, just bullet point, the ones that you are willing to, the two that you're willing to work with and the ones you are going to reconsider.
We're willing to...
That's what, yeah.
We're, okay, the things that we're willing to work with aggressively with staff are the removal of the front central dormer on the, on the existing main house that was first, and we're willing to work a lot on the walled terrace component. I think we need something there that's a patio of some sort, because it does have a view of downtown. This is the side amenity, and other houses on the street do address that, so it is contextual. The two items that we do want to have some really good consideration on, based on site conditions, topography, and a few other things, are the addition to the side and the height and the addition of a roofed second floor above the entrance, entranceway between the kitchen, garage, and the main house.
Perfect.
Thank you. That helps. Yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I just wanted to ask you for clarification. Did you say that you were, you may have just done it, you may have just done it. If you did, I apologize for being redundant, that you were agreeable to do, taking away the front door, that side, that extra door on the side there?
No, we, the door's there, and we could either leave it or not, but we would reorient the steps that kind of come up to that door and make it more important. We would reorient that so that those steps are either masked or go away.
Okay, so the door's already there.
The door's already there.
Yeah, okay. It has a bush in front of it.
It does.
And Rose, I believe to help clarify that, do I understand, the original front door is no longer the front door in its current state?
In its current use, the original front door does not function as a front door.
And so the way the house currently functions?
Just to use that door.
Is that one, right.
Well, I apologize. I was trying to look at something else. You said that, and I apologize.
Okay, thanks, man. Open public hearing. Anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, scene closed, public hearing. Discussion? Discussion?
I just have a question. We don't have a new proposed floor plan in our staff report, do we? Just existing floor plans?
I believe that's correct, yes.
And I know typically, we don't, we're not reviewing the interior, but understanding what they're adding, and I don't know if maybe the applicant could help us understand that, or if you all have a slide of the floor plans, but if it, I think it might be helpful to understand what programmatic elements you're adding and... Because I think, as you look at the cross-section, clearly the slope of this lot makes it incredibly difficult to add on to the back. And if they were adding only bedrooms, maybe those could just be added to the top floor and go back, and you'd be up, you know, you'd be at grade in the back of the house, potentially. I don't know that it necessarily changes the staff's, I mean, the staff's analysis, I think, is correct in terms of how it conforms or doesn't. I think it's just a question of whether the constraints on the site are putting so much constraint on this property that this is sort of their only way they could go and whether we find that acceptable or not. It's a hardship for...
This is the interior.
Well, I have it right here.
Or is there two of them here? Is this the same?
I'm not sure.
Oh, they're not.
And could I ask the applicant to speak and just describe the programmatic additions?
All right. So this floor plan was developed to keep the scale of the house from overwhelming the front facade. We have a ridge height of about nine foot four, which means that what's underneath that major roof is really constrained space. We chose to place two programmatic functions that are for public use to expand the use of the existing residence, which really is two bedrooms, a dining room, a kitchen, and a living room, to make it more functional for day-to-day use, and to put a bedroom on top, along with a master suite of the existing residence, and then over the garage to the right, the right portion of the addition, another bedroom or office space, while putting other rooms, such as a, there's a sunroom, connecting hall, the stair, and a great room behind the house, sunken in because, quite frankly, to put guest bedrooms on the lower level, we would have been in a condition where we have window sills too high for egress on several sides. Does that help? We basically took a spine across the back of the house and made that our circulation space that goes up and down on both floors.
So it looks like, looks like you're trying to create a, with your sunroom and great room, probably higher ceilings than...
Correct.
Having a second floor above them would allow because, I guess my question would be, why wouldn't you take the second-floor office or bedroom or some of that addition that's on the second-floor side and put it on the back over some of those rooms? Maybe have some stairs to them?
I don't own the house. I'm not the client.
Right.
It's something to be very clear. I represent the client. I've been asked to produce a scheme that makes sense for them functionally and how they want to live.
Yeah. Understand.
And we want to do something. If we start putting bedrooms on the back, we start ending up with the kind of double hump possibilities of roof to make, if you're going to build a new bedroom up top, you don't compromise. So we start having the ridge that's above the ridge, and then we have a whole different discussion about what's overtaking mass because we would want to lift things up. So we really tried to find a massing that would tuck most of the bulk of the addition behind the existing house and be subservient to it.
All right. Well, you may be back.
I appreciate the fact that y'all are willing to work with the commission, I mean, the staff to do this, although I just think we've talked through so many things that we're really getting away from what we can do today. And I really think we'd like to see a new plan before, I feel comfortable doing that, but I do appreciate the fact that they're willing to work with you.
Yeah, I agree with you, Ann. I just think it's just, it's just taken away so much from the home that it just feels, you just totally lost the historic nature of the home. And I know they're constrained by the site, but it just, maybe that they just can't expand that much. I just, I don't know. Could it be just an inherent problem with the site and the house? But I definitely tend to concur with staff on this one.
And I would add, and I agree, I would add that, you know, we're normally much more concerned about what you can see from the street. And so given the site constraints here, you know, if they're going to be adding this much program, I think, and I know we can't determine a design that we haven't seen, but I think, you know, we would be probably more open to breaking ridge lines on the backside of the house, you know, exceeding height on the backside, which is well beyond the front of the house, over very visible second-floor additions that are proposed here. So to perhaps give them a little guidance, and I suspect that would be consistent with probably the staff's guidance as well.
Well, Ann, do you want to craft a...
Well, I would add to that is that those are just suggestions, that we're not saying that if you do, we will. So just to make, understood that, to give you some guidance on what to look at, but there's certainly not a preapproval.
Right.
Why don't you go ahead and make your motion?
All right. Well, I'll, to, I will make a motion to adopt staff recommendation on 3105 overlook.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
Robin, do you need these floor plans, or does the applicant need these back?
We will need them for the record.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. 1706A, Fourth Avenue North. Let's let the next one. Commissioner Rose.
Before you all get started, I'd just like to make an announcement. I'm going to recuse myself from this case. Mr. White and I, and Sandy, his wife, my husband Ben, we are too close of friends for me to feel comfortable sitting on this case, Tom. Sorry.
Are we without quorum? Do we have quorum?
Yeah, we still have quorum.
Okay. All right. You may recognize the address. This is an application to construct six houses on a 100-foot-wide by 174-foot-deep lot. It was recently rezoned to SP for a specific plan, and that SP allows up to six detached dwellings. The earlier version that you saw of this was, in August, was disapproved and then disapproved again in September. In the discussion for those meetings, the commissioners stated that they found the massing and scale of the project to be incompatible with the surrounding context and that the rear buildings of the six-building plan were not subordinate to those at the front and that the project lacked a courtyard, which the commissioners expressed that they felt was a necessary feature of a cottage development. In this current proposal, actually, the front two structures, which are the top A and B on that site plan, the front two structures are essentially the same as the previous submittal. This is 1708A. 1706 is similar, just with a different roof. However, since the first time through, the rear structures have been revised. They've been reduced in height by about five feet and reduced in width by two feet, and the result of that is an increase in the width of the courtyard, which was 10 feet wide and now would be 14 feet. Staff feels, however, that even with those changes, the massing of the structure, of the rear structures are not sufficiently subordinate to those at the front and that the, that six buildings, six two-story houses on one 100-foot lot are essentially two typical lots, that that is not compatible with the surrounding historic context in terms of scale and rhythm of spacing. Staff recommends disapproval of the proposed infill development, finding that the scale and massing does not meet the, is not compatible with the surrounding context and does not meet the design guidelines for the Salem Town neighborhood conservation zoning overlay. That's my conclusion. The applicants are here, and they have a presentation they'd like to give you while, before they come up, if you have any questions, I can try to answer them, too.
What was the last thing you said? I'm sorry.
I just, I can answer any questions, and of course, the designer and developers are here, too.
Okay, thanks.
I do have a question, Sean. Could you repeat the height difference from the previous proposal?
Yeah. These buildings, set B and C, have been, the heights have been reduced by five feet. Essentially, they did that by taking a true two-story wall and cutting it from an eight-foot wall on the second story and cutting it down to something more like a five-foot knee wall and changing the roof pitch a bit. So it brings the overall, the total ridge height down five feet.
And did you say the courtyard in the middle is larger than it?
Yes. So again, the B and C buildings are, they still are all the way out on the outer setbacks, five feet from the property lines, but their widths, or though if you were in the courtyard looking at the front of the house, essentially the depth of the house, in that dimension, they've been reduced, each house has been reduced by two feet. So that's four feet total in the courtyard getting larger.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Sean, what are the height differences between A and B and C?
The A buildings, 1706 and 1708A, are approximately, obviously may vary somewhat with grade, but about 32 feet tall, a little bit shy of that 318. And then the B and C buildings are 27 feet tall from grade to the peak.
The height of the, I'm digressing here, the previous application, not the previous one, the one before that, the one and a half-story home, what's the approximate height of a one and a half-story home, just generally speaking?
The previous application, do you mean for overlook?
No, the one before that, the construction.
The 114 and 17th Street.
Like your typical one and a half-story cottage height? What is that, just in general terms?
That one was 23 feet 6 inches from grade.
And generally, your reason for disapproval is that you just felt the massing is not, there's just too many houses?
Yeah.
Not necessarily too many houses, but the massing of the houses is not consistent with that.
Essentially, that it's overbuilding the lot. Here, the aerial view probably goes, gives the best impression, although you certainly feel it just as much, if not more, from the street itself, that it's typically a single-family detached context, although there are a lot of recent non-contributing structures mixed in there as well. But to see six lots, or, excuse me, six houses on where normally you might see two is just out of character, overbuilds this lot compared to the context.
This has been approved for six homes, correct?
Up to six.
Up to six.
Our recommendation really is based on your comments from the last time, from the first time this was heard, and we felt like it wasn't quite meeting what we heard you saying. And that may not be the case, but we heard things like the green space should be larger, it should be close to 50% of the width of the overall lot, and that the homes behind it should be significantly smaller. So it was really, we were trying to provide direction that was following the direction you gave the first time, if that makes sense.
I'd just like to remind the commission, though, that those were individual comments, not necessarily part of the motion, and I would, I specifically don't concur with all of those in the case that we saw previously.
Thanks. Okay.
One more question. Sorry.
That's okay.
So we've, Salem Town kind of presents this whole challenge with context, right? I mean, we see...
You could say that.
Two stories, three stor, I mean, we see large homes that we approve, and there's, the context is there's no surrounding historic homes, and the next one that's historic is two blocks down the street, and it's kind of this emerging development, so to speak. Is that a correct statement? I mean, I'm not trying to gloss over the fact that you're saying that it's not in context, but if there's one area that we kind of struggle with context, I mean, I'm not trying to advocate this, I'm just trying to kind of, trying to put this in a little bit better perspective. I mean, we've been...
Well, that's one of the reasons why I asked the question, too, because it was, but apparently it's based on our dialogue, because you're right, we have all, we've looked at all kinds of stuff in Salem Town, so.
And the...
Well, let's go ahead and listen to the applicant.
I was just going to say, there really isn't any context for this...
No.
...intensity of development, so it's, I feel like we're all learning, it's something kind of new for us.
Okay. Thanks, Robin. Okay. Would the applicant like to come forward? Thanks.
Do you need the, their presentation? Not the next one. Okay. Sure. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Tom White. I represent the applicant in this matter. Appreciate your courtesies in looking at this matter today. I think, as Robin just said, context is something that's clearly developing in this particular area, and it is something that's subject to this interpretation by this commission, but we do appreciate your time. When we first came before the commission, the proposal did present six units, and as you can see on the site, there were always six units on the property. Two triplexes were replacing six units with six units, and now a single-family detached. But the first plan that was submitted had a larger footprint for the units. It had a smaller courtyard, and the subordinate units, which are four of the six, were five feet taller. And we, at that point, had a staff recommendation for approval that it was in keeping with context. There were, in deference to the staff, comments made by the commission at the time about, can we basically see whether or not you could have a larger courtyard area? Do you really have a right to six units here? That type of thing. As Hunter G. commented, this is a subject of an SP. That is the domain of the planning commission, which says that it's up to six units they approve. It doesn't take away from the authority of this group to look at that and talk about the design on these units, which is why we're here today. But the six units and the allowance of six units is clearly something that was allowed under the SP. I think there's some great dialogue going on now between the planning commission and historic, I think Doug Sloan, Tim Reynolds, about how they coordinate this process, so it's a little maybe earlier on that there's dialogue between the two different commissions. But that call is to six is basically the planning commission. But we did take into account all the comments that were made as referenced, and you'll hear in the presentation, everything that was mentioned has been incorporated. Council Lady Erica Gimmore, who's been a huge champion of what's being done in Salem Town now, has written a letter in support of our proposal. And in addition, there's a letter that I will turn in from a neighbor that lives four hours down, whose name is Autumn Parrott. And I'll just paraphrase the letter. She lives four hours down. She's writing in support of the proposal, has attended all of the neighborhood meetings on this, goes on to comment about how this is totally in keeping... comment about how this is totally in keeping with context and what they're looking for in the neighborhood. Talks about the quality of aerial development, and that the neighborhood welcomes this project, looks forward to working with the team at Ariel. To my knowledge, we've not heard any criticism from anybody in the neighborhood, has been totally supportive, I think as the staff said, gets down to what is in context here, and I respectfully submit, this is exactly what is in context and in keeping. Thank you for your courtesy.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeremy Lego of Aerial Builders. I'll start off by thanking all of you for the time to present these Fourth Avenue cottages. As you're aware, we've been working closely with historic staff for the past 15 months. And I have to say, Robin and Sean have been great to work with. They've taken time to come to our office, and they've worked with us to really put together a plan that we felt really worked. We followed every suggestion Robin and Sean gave us, and, and we weren't surprised whatsoever when we had a unanimous staff approval back in August. However, we were really surprised when, when you all didn't disapprove our plans. This is why we're back here today. And with that being said, we have listened closely to your recommendations and have made appropriate changes, and yet, this time, we're not receiving the staff's approval. And there are really three concerns pointed out to us. The first one, if you could hold it on this slide here, Sean, concern was brought up, the homes were not contributing to the neighborhood. On the mantra, you can see there are numerous examples of neighboring homes that are two stories and have like architecture. 1733 and 1735 Fourth Avenue really jump out at me the most. 1733 is a one and a half story home, and 1735 is a two-story home, and both these homes were built in 1925. Now, 1721, 1723, 1726, and 1728 are newer homes, but they are all also two-story. In fact, over 40% of the homes in that block there contribute to our design. Secondly, it was our understanding that it was important to the commission that the rear units be subordinate to the front units. And on the mantra, we can see that we made those changes. Can you go to the second slide, please? The rear units now are five feet shorter than the original plan, going from 33 feet tall to 27 feet tall. If you refer back to the neighboring homes, the homes that were built in 1925, these homes are even taller than these proposed ones. 19, sorry, 1735 Fourth Avenue, which is a two-story, is approximately 28 feet tall, and 1733 Fourth Avenue, which is a one and a half story, is approximately 30 feet tall. So some tall homes. Finally, there was concern about the courtyard being too small. If you could scroll down to the very last slide, please? We've since reduced the size of the rear homes and have substantially increased the size of the courtyard by 40%. If you look at the mantra, you can see the before and after renderings of the courtyard, and it is substantially larger. Now, we also have a virtual tour we'd like to show you. Macario, if you can get that ready. All right, here's coming in from Fourth Avenue. These would be the 1706 and 1708A units in the front. Now, we're coming up to them and going through a path to the rear units, and these units are subordinate, and the courtyard is quite a bit bigger. I love this shot here, it really shows how the front units are quite a bit bigger than the rear ones. And again, we believe this courtyard has a great feel. Now, the past few weeks, while we've been working on modifying our plans, we were really surprised to hear the neighborhood was not in support of our project. We have personally reached out and spoken with numerous neighbors, and they have all been incredibly supportive of our plan. In fact, we have neighbors here today in support of this project, I also have letters from neighbors in support of this project. Councilwoman Gilmore also stands with us in support of this project. This is a good project. So from conception to completion, we at Ariel strive to work hand in hand with the neighborhoods, the councilmen, the councilwomen, the historic staff, and the planning department. We diligently try to cross every T and dot every I, and we wholeheartedly believe that these modified plans have done exactly what you've asked us to do. So we're asking for your approval. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. One second before you sit down, are there any questions to the applicant before, are there other applicants coming, or just your last one?
I'm in.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. You are allowed a two-minute rebuttal too, if necessary at the end. Okay, open public hearing, all those like to speak regarding this project. State your name and address.
Hi, I'm Jason Preston, 1726 Fourth Avenue North. I just wanted to come on behalf of my family and also people in our neighborhood, we are in unison of this project going through. There has been some other people that have not known exactly the structure of this property, but after speaking with them on my own personal experience, I know that aerial development has come forth and been willing to work with people, along with people in the neighborhood, and also our association in our neighborhood. And again, they're coming out and striving to show you guys that they're willing to work with historic to make this project work. So again, speaking on behalf of people in the neighborhood, we really would like for you guys to give consideration to this project. Thank you.
Any others? Okay, closed public hearing, discussion?
I was not here during the discussions in August, I think the last two meetings, and so I think I'm seeing it a little bit with a different eyes than possibly that I live near Salem Town, and so, you know, you do see a lot of different, I think Salem Town is a very difficult, it's a challenge for this board to follow the overlay. Not, not hard to follow, but I'm saying in terms of its, its intense. So, the question, I don't know if somebody had said this, but did the neighborhood association actually make a statement that they approve or, or approval or disapproval? So are you with the neighborhood association? Can I ask that? You are?
I don't know if it's appropriate for me to speak.
Okay, I, I don't think so, but anyway.
Yeah, no one has, so.
Right.
That we know of, anyway.
Okay. I guess my, my perspective of that as well is that, looking at the, the latest presentation with the, whatever you call it, isometrics per se, it does give a really good context of what that, the six units would look like. And you see this all over town, I mean, you see this all over in different neighborhoods, and it seems to be following other neighborhood context, but again, the challenge is because this is not seen in Salem Town, this will be the first that is a challenge for us. But it looks like that the developer made some intent to diminish that two-story look, because, you know, on the staff disapproval, it says, finding that the scale enassing of six two-story houses. And I think where I'm looking at that, it doesn't look like a two-story, it looks like a one and a half story, because of the way the facades with varying roof lines tend to give it that interest, yet not a full two-story. So I, I don't see where any design guidelines have been quoted to say, we're disapproving it because of this, this, and this. So I see it more as it's saying, it's too, the massing is too big for a 100-foot lot. So I'm, I think those are just comments for, for consideration, but I'm not saying I'm disapproving it or approving it, but that it is a challenge to do it in that, in this fashion.
Okay, thank you. What about you, Ann?
I mean, I think that made the compromises, I know that if, if there are some concerns, that we need to at least point them out, and if they're concerns and we approve it, that we are not necessarily saying this is a prototype and that, that we're setting a precedent, if we have, if we have those, if we have those concerns. And I was not here on the original discussion.
You guys?
I think it's interesting, because we're kind of put in a interesting situation, because the planning department has approved this development for six individual homes, as I understand it.
Council.
Council, thank you. And I think there's, this has created some good dialogue between the planning department and historic commission about how to do this probably better or going forward, but, so here we are with six approved lots on, and on the site, and I, to me, there's a, I feel tremendously better about this plan than the first one that was presented, it just feels better. I mean, to go from 10 feet to 14 feet in the courtyard, even though it's 40%, I mean, it's not like, it's gigantic, that hadn't like gone to like 50 feet, but there is an effort to make it larger. There were definite efforts to make the four rear units shorter, and I just, I feel fairly good about it, and I appreciate the effort that the applicant has gone through. I'm glad we didn't approve the first one. I think everyone in the community maybe has heard us about what's important, and I think, given kind of what was presented in law, you know, the metro council approving this six lot plan, that at the end of the day, I feel like we've done, we've done a good job if, if we approved this.
Do you want to add to that, Hunter?
Well, I agree, I think, you know, I think the part that's tough is, and I'm afraid we have maybe gotten to a point where we're guiding the staff rather than the staff guiding us, and the staff deals with this all the time, every day, they know the guidelines, they know the intent of the neighborhood when they were developed, and so we're in a situation where perhaps a less complying plan was actually recommended by staff for approval. Now the applicants have changed their plans to be in more compliance, or more compliant. So I'm struggling with how to make a motion here, in that I do believe, you know, one thing that I'm not sure I even realized from the original presentation is, there's currently six units on the site now, and those buildings obviously don't contribute to the historic character and certainly don't comply with our guidelines. So I may ask Susan to carefully listen to the motion as you always do, to make sure it's proper, but I think, you know, given the limited historic context here, the fact that there were six units previously on the site, the fact that the staff recommended the previously larger scale application, that no one from the community has opposed this, that there, that even, that all the buildings have been reduced in height, I think, I think even the front units along the street have been reduced in height, oh, they have not, okay, I thought from that drawing, but that the rear buildings have been reduced in height and footprint, I recommend we approve the application.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
I like that, too, I think, I feel like we did, they did listen to us and came back with a good solution, that listened to what our discussion was.
And I want to point out, I mean, I think, you know, the staff's always in a tough spot, and we've probably put them in a tough spot, because we're probably not always super consistent, so I appreciate the staff trying to utilize our, you know, and it makes sense certainly for the staff to be responding to how we are responding, but I think in this case, you know, I also think that since the applicant wasn't able to be here that day, you know, we didn't really hear the, the full story and the full presentation as well, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. The next one is 1706, no, sorry, 2002 Eastland Avenue, looking right at it, trying to make two.
The application, this application at 2002 Eastland Avenue, you've also seen before, it is an application to demolish a non-contributing structure that straddles a property line and to construct, reestablish the separate lots, and to construct two new buildings, one on each lot. You may recall on the previous iterations that were disapproved in August and September, since then, the applicant has substantially revised these plans in several ways, they've revised the roof form to be, it was a salt box before, it's more, more like a typical side gable or cross gable now. They have reduced the height of the buildings by six feet, for each building by six feet, and increased the width of the building by two feet each. Additionally, there have been some windows that have been revised, and a front yard parking area that was originally submitted has been eliminated from the plan. Those are the side elevation. Staff is of the opinion that the applicant has addressed the concerns that the commission addressed or expressed about the scale of the buildings, the relationship of height and width, and the compatibility, compatibility with the historic context. Staff recommends approval of the project with conditions that the finished floor heights be consistent with those of adjacent historic houses, that staff approve the roof colors and final details, dimensions, materials of windows and doors, and that staff approve materials of porch floor and steps, and actually, I believe the architect has since said that they'll be concrete, so that's two conditions. And meeting the, the remaining two conditions, staff approves, staff recommends approval of the project as meeting the guidelines for the conservation overlay.
Okay, and you, I think you said the applicant had, you just, could you restate that, they had agreed to the first one?
Yeah.
Okay, but the not, and then the second two?
Maybe it doesn't show up very well, but I, on a revised site plan, I saw that it was a concrete walkway.
Okay.
They'll actually have a ramp, I think, for ADA, so.
Okay, I understand. Okay, any questions for Sean? Okay, thanks. Sean, is the applicant here? There he is.
I am here, I'll be here for questions if needed, I think Mr. Brett Weathers has some comments.
Okay, any questions for John? All right, thank you.
We admire your persistence.
Well, I do have a question, Sean, you may have said, and sorry, this is maybe a question for Sean, but I think there's a, maybe a typo in the, on page six of the staff report, it says, the height has been reduced by six feet, and then it has two feet in.
Yeah, it's not six feet, the overall height is now 27.6, correct? Down from 30.
Yeah, sorry about that, so, maybe I meant to have it at two feet six, is that probably?
And that is measured from actual grade on the high side of the house.
Okay, so approximately three or four feet shorter?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Correct, and we did so by changing the roof slope and kind of creating a wider home.
Okay, thank you.
Explain the rear business and the residential entrance.
I'm sorry?
The rear elevations, the business entry and the residential entry?
Yes, this is a mixed-use cottage in a mixed-use district.
With just one entry, one entry at the front?
Correct, the entrance on the front will be just The entrance on the front will be just dedicated to the commercial entity on the first floor.
Okay.
But they'll have a secondary means of egress out of the first floor space. Yes.
Okay, thanks, John. Open public hearing.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Brett Withers. I am the president of the Eastwood Neighbors Organization, and this is in our overlay. It's on a shared boundary, Eastland Avenue, between the Eastwood and Eastland neighborhoods, or, I'm sorry, the Eastwood and Lockland Springs neighborhoods. And both of our neighborhood groups have kind of talked about this project in the past. First of all, I want to thank the commissioners for entertaining the concern that we had about the proportion, the overall proportionality of the buildings with regard to the narrowness of the buildings within context and also the height. We appreciate you entertaining that, particularly in a rather unique situation where we had two 30-foot lots. But we, both of our neighborhoods felt that we really needed to get the proportions on this building right, not only because it's Eastland Avenue, which, as I've described before, is sort of like our Belmont Boulevard. It's a very, very visible location. But also that stretch has a really unique M U N A zoning that our neighborhoods worked through a while back. And so we recognize that there are some unique circumstances with putting commercial downstairs and residential above, which is something we want to have. But we wanted to have some guidance from the commissioners on what we can expect if we do have additional zoning like that in the future for what we can expect in terms of height and proportions on properties like that. So just want to thank the commissioners for working with us. The concern that we had about the height and the width has been addressed by the applicant. We initially said we would either want one structure in the center that was larger and wider or two smaller ones. And there was a little bit of a preference in the neighborhood for the two smaller ones. And we're grateful that the applicant has been able to revise the plans to come up with two structures that have a lower height and a little bit wider width so that that seems to blend better with the context. One other thing, if I may, I took, I've taken a couple of photos of buildings along Eastland Avenue that happen to have upstairs porches. Just a little side project that I've been working on since we're seeing more and more requests from that from builders as well as from buyers in our neighborhoods. And so just for your own edification, I've taken some photos and I've got copies available of just a couple of buildings. One is across the street from this. One is a couple of blocks down on Eastland, and one is quite a bit further down on Eastland. But I just took a couple of photos of buildings along Eastland that also have upstairs porches for you to consider. That's not something that I think has really been entertained quite a bit in discussions for, before the Metro Historic Zoning Commission in the past. But if you needed some examples to look at that a typical visitor to this building would see, those are the ones that they would see and compare that with. But both of our, the Eastwood and Lockland Springs neighborhoods actually really like the fact that there's an upstairs balcony as a way of activating that street. And so that is something that we support in this case. But I will be around if you have any questions for me. But the Eastwood and Lockland Springs neighborhoods recommend that you approve the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others in the public who like to speak regarding this project? Okay, closed public hearing, discussion.
Yeah, that's, you know, really good example of how the process works. So I appreciate all the effort by the applicant. So I move approval based on staff recommendation.
Second.
Lot of seconds here. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Before, I have a question. On the photos that we see here, would these, were they built within the guidelines approved by this committee? Or these are just existing?
That Mr. Withers handed out? These are existing?
Historic.
They're existing, historic, but, I mean, they would have been approved by our commission if they were to be built like this now?
Yes, in fact, you have approved some in other neighborhoods that are similar to this.
Okay, all right. Thank you. If I could just add, I wanted to just say, I appreciate you coming back and trying to work with it because I know I spoke against this the first time. And so thank you for doing that and your willingness to work with the staff. Thank you.
All right. All right, 207 Gentry Avenue.
This is a large two lots that have received an S P zone for 10 units and includes just one historic building constructed in early 1920. And it should be noted that the current plans show full bathrooms in the outbuildings, which the code department determines makes it a dwelling unit. But it's our understanding from the applicant that there will not be a dwelling unit in those outbuildings. That's the middle row. In the past, the commission has approved cottage developments that do not meet traditional development patterns, like you had earlier today, of the historic neighborhoods and therefore have required elements such as connection to the street with walkways for interior units in that central courtyard. But this development is more in keeping with traditional development patterns in that it has four principal buildings facing the street. Each one of those has an outbuilding behind it so that that area is pretty much like a traditional sized lot. And then the difference is the lane at the very back. So some of the things that we normally ask for in the cottage developments, you won't necessarily see on this development. There is very little historic context on the stretch of Gentry. 207 Gentry Avenue is the only house that actually faces the street. Across the street, most of those are the back of the homes that face Porter. The plan is to construct infill on either side of the historic building, as well as in addition to the historic building, outbuildings for each of those four principal dwellings, and six smaller units at the back of these deep lots. The project meets the design guidelines in terms of the addition and partial demolition related to the historic home, in terms of setbacks, rhythm of spacing, orientation, parking, partial demolition of the existing addition, height, scale, proportion of openings, and the outbuildings. To meet the requirements for materials, staff recommends the conditions that all lap siding have a maximum reveal of five inches. And that staff approve windows and doors, roof color, masonry samples, and that the foundation be split-faced block. And that House One have a change in material at the foundation level. To meet the requirements for roof form, staff recommends that the dormer of House Number One be pushed back so that it is inset a minimum of two feet from the front wall, from the wall below. To meet the requirements for rhythm of openings, staff recommends that several changes be made to the windows. On House One's side facade, the windows towards the front of the house, one on the right and two on the left, should be enlarged so that they are three feet taller than the two feet tall. On House Number Two, the right side, two windows in the front, the base should be enlarged so they are at least three feet tall and vertically oriented. On House Two's left facade, the triple windows also be elongated. Similarly, on House Four's right side, the windows be elongated and on the left side. To meet the requirements for utilities, staff asks that the HVAC units be located on the rear facades or on a side facade beyond the midpoint of the house. So in summary, staff recommends approval with, on House One, there be a change in material from the foundation to the wall. On House One, side dormers be set back a minimum of two feet. The windows on Houses One, Two, and Four be vertically oriented on the side facades. The finished floor heights of the three new houses facing Gentry be consistent with the finished floor height of existing House 207 Gentry. All horizontal lap siding be a maximum of five inches. The HVAC units for the primary houses facing Gentry be at the midpoint or at the back. Staff approve windows and doors, roof shingle color, brick, and other materials, and that the concrete block for the foundation be split-faced. And with those conditions, we found that it met the design guidelines. And I know this is a big project, and obviously I didn't go to every detail of each one of these buildings. So if you have any questions, I'm here and the applicant's here.
Can you, at the very beginning, you made reference to the units at the rear and they were detached, looked at, you're looking at them as detached units, but they've got restrooms. What, can you go through that again?
Yeah, the first, let me go back. The first row that you see are these four.
Okay.
And right behind them, they'll each have an outbuilding associated with them. But they will not be dwelling units, from what we've been told. Then behind that, you have six more units, and those are dwelling units.
So basically, the middle row, garage is?
Yeah. Garage is bonus space, maybe a partial bath.
Is that limited by the zoning?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Robyn.
Thanks.
Is the applicant here and like to come forward and speak regarding this project?
My name is Matthew Smith. I designed the units. My address is 1501 Winding Way, Nashville. We enjoyed working with the staff to develop, refine the project and to make it compliant. I'd like to address the eight staff comments individually. Item number one, item number four, six, seven, and eight, I am in full agreement. Item one, on House One, there be a change in material from the foundation to the wall above. Finished floor heights of the three new homes on Gentry be consistent with the finished floor height of the existing home. The HVAC units be appropriately located. And then staff approval of door and window specs and that all concrete block foundations be split-faced. So I'm in agreement with all of that. The next two items, the horizontal lap siding and all new construction have a minimum reveal of five inches. All of the homes on Gentry Avenue do meet that requirement. Originally, I believe Home Number Four, I wanted a wider siding, but I changed that because that would also be appropriate. We wanted to seek a different character, however, for the garage units as well as the cottage units. And as you can see, it has a slightly more modern expression. Wanted to have kind of a different feel. These units will not be visible from the street. They will be partially visible, but not very visible from the street. I consulted with the neighbors and there were no objections from the neighbors regarding the material for these homes. So I would like to respectfully ask for reconsideration on the lap siding. But I'm confident I can work with staff on that. The other item, being on Home Number, Home Number One, the side dormer windows, as you can see, the side shed dormers are slightly set back from the wall below. The requirement is a two-foot setback. After looking at this further, I've determined that I can move it back about eight more inches, but not the full two feet without compromising the second floor design. One item that should be considered in this case is the two-foot overhang so that you do have a minimum of, or you have approximately three feet of roof below that dormer. If I'm able to push it back one foot instead of two feet. Again, I feel confident that I can work with staff on resolving that detail issue. And, let's see. And then regarding the side elevations of the homes, I believe, I agree with staff that it is important to try to increase the size of the windows on the side elevations, particularly towards the front of, the front half of the house. And I'm willing to do that. There are a few instances, particularly in the family rooms, which in all cases are located at the back half of the house, as well as places like the master toilet and places like that, where I feel it'd be more appropriate to have the smaller windows. However, the windows, I'd be happy to make these smaller windows vertically oriented. Some of them are shown as horizontal or square. In the family room in particular, it helps to have smaller windows flanking the fireplace so that you can have bookcases each side of the fireplace. And that is all I have to say. Any questions that you have?
Any questions to the applicant?
Well, I just want to make sure that I'm clear with what you've presented here. Is it my understanding, just to clarify, that you are willing to work with staff on conditions one through eight, including the lap siding, which is number five?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So basically, you don't have any objection to these conditions?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was.
Is that correct?
The one item that I would like to, the one that's going to be the hardest for me to comply is that dormer issue. So I would like to seek to have some flexibility regarding that.
Okay. Which one is that?
That's the most important issue because it reflects the floor plan. That's number two.
So my understanding, though, is you are asking to have greater than a five-inch reveal on the lap siding. You are asking for not to have to meet the two feet. So I just, I want to make sure you know what he is requesting.
On the lap siding, I think, forgive me, this is my first time here, so.
Sure, that's fine.
I don't think it wouldn't, I think the cottages and garages look better with the wider siding. It's more appropriate. But I can live with a five inch as well. Although I think that it'd be nice to have the contrast with the Gentry homes.
Okay.
That is not going to kill me.
What he recently asked for is a different siding width on the units at the rear.
Yeah, I understood that, but I heard him say that he could work with staff on this.
Yeah.
Well, staff's drawing the line at five inches, so.
Now I'm hearing, though, he can live with it.
Yeah, he said he could, yeah.
Well, and I also read that that's important to us, but if he does want to use different materials, he'll work with the staff to get approval for those materials.
Certainly if he decided to use panels or stucco, yeah, I mean, we make those changes all the time.
Right.
Just to remind you, the five-inch reveal has been something that you've required for many, many, many years. And even on garages in the back, when people have accidentally put up a wider reveal and they've asked to keep it, they've been made to take it off. So that's why we were being pretty strict about that, to keep in the two feet, same thing. It's something you've asked of everybody.
Yeah. But I was asking you to hear the fact that we're really set on that. However, if there are other materials that you want to use to work with staff on those approvals, if in fact you want that character of that building to be a little different. But the five inches, so set.
Okay.
Okay. What other materials would be up to their discretion to approve?
Okay. And it has been clarified that we were, we are asking for approval for siding wider than five inches, just for the record.
Okay, well, that, I mean, I think we're set on the siding.
Okay.
It's just that any other materials, brick, stucco, any of those others, that you might want to add, that would be, set these apart from the front buildings, you would work with staff to do.
Yeah, I think, I mean, the commission hasn't acted yet, so, but.
Yeah.
But I think what Commissioner Nielsen is saying is that we've just, when it comes to lap siding, because it is such a historic, a material that's been used historically, that this commission has sort of always drawn the line. Now, I was going to make the statement that, given that this is a corner lot, we could consider the rear buildings that are on that side street differently than those that are internal to the site, potentially.
That's actually an alley.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a large lot, but it's an interior lot.
So the whole, yeah, okay. So the whole thing? I should know this. I live like a few blocks away.
And I kept doing the same thing. I kept looking at that. It's just.
The site plan made it.
Yeah, I think we would, the laps, we just, we don't want to go backwards on the laps after all this, but obviously, like, it's been stated, we would look at any other material. Is there anything else that you wanted to add? I know you had counsel there for a second. Nothing else different, right?
No, that's all.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant before you could sound?
Yeah, I do have. On number two, you were talking about, you said you'd rather for us to consider the one foot setback versus a two-foot. Is that correct?
Yes, I can manage one foot without altering the design a lot. So I would ask that I be allowed to set it back one feet instead of two feet. The overhang is, it's an approximate two-foot overhang, so you would have. The overhang is, it's an approximate two-foot overhang, so you would have an apparent, greater setback, I think, than it actually is because you'd have three feet of roof in front of that dormer window.
And in that, you currently have it set back, is it about six inches?
Yes, it's just, yeah, about six inches.
So you're saying an additional six inches?
I could push it back another six or eight inches before I run into issues with maximum egress sill height.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Open public hearing? Unless you weren't about to speak, or are you the other applicant? Okay, open public hearing?
Good afternoon, and commissioners, my name's Brett Withers, 1113 Granada Avenue. I would like to thank the applicants for working so long and so hard with our neighborhood on this. The first meeting that we had with our council member and neighbors was last June, not June of this year, June of the last year. So we really have been in discussions on this for a long time. We had a formal presentation in our neighborhood in, actually at two, but in January and February at that time, it was for a total of 15 units, which would be that the back, what are now garage units, would be full daddoos, basically. The neighbors were uncomfortable with that level of density, and the applicant really has worked with us to have that be a conditioned space and not a separate living space that would have a whole lot of units operating off of that alley. So they've been very, very flexible in working with us on that. Obviously, this proposal was in process, more or less simultaneously, with our efforts to put in our conservation overlay, and there was a contributing structure on that lot, and I want to commend the applicant for maintaining that historic structure on that lot at a time when they could have removed it. So certainly, they have worked with us. The idea of having a rear alley in the back is a little unusual, but I think it's kind of exciting, actually. Instead of a traditional cottage development, it sort of creates a totally separate kind of community in the back, but those lots are 200 feet deep. It's also unusual that they have an alley going along the side instead of in the back. So that's a unique opportunity to sort of create a separate community in the back. And really, it's appropriate that it have a totally different look. A lot of our neighbors really like the traditional look of the buildings that are on Gentry. It creates context where there was none. And in terms of more contemporary design, there are those who like it, but don't feel that having all that front on Gentry itself would be appropriate, but having it in the back is a kind of a unique opportunity. So again, really, I just want to commend the applicants on working so hard with our neighborhood over the past about year and a half. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak regarding this project?
It's okay, it's ready, morning.
Okay, seeing none, closed public hearing. Discussion?
You know, I think this is really a cool project in that, you know, we haven't seen anything like this, and takes a condition where there's not a rear alley and sort of creates one, you know, even though it's all on sort of one property. I think it's really innovative from an infill perspective. I think it makes a lot of sense, it fits into the neighborhood, and I'm going to support it. I'm interested in hearing the other commissioners' comments about the conditions. I think we're probably all in agreement on number five, given that we've never approved anything larger than five inches. Though again, to point out that there may be other materials that are more modern that the staff could work with the applicant on. I don't have a problem, and I understand the challenges with the dormer, so I wouldn't necessarily have a problem with a reduced setback from the exterior wall to a foot rather than the two feet. And then, you know, the windows, I'll take staff's lead on that, but you know, there are, and it sounds like between the staff and the applicant, they can probably work through that, so.
Very good. Any other comments?
Hunter, I agree with you. It's really, it's really cool, so. I don't think we're supposed to say that, but it is, it's kind of fun to see something like this show up, and I really think it's been great, everybody's able to work together, and Mr. Withers and everybody, so, thanks.
And I also can appreciate diddling the other commissioners about, you know, preserving the contributing structure because, although they couldn't have taken it down anyway, right? It's under overlay.
But they did get started before the overlay, they could have taken it down earlier.
Ah, well, there you go. So thank you for the development, for doing that, because that is part of our purview, and it's a good move.
Any more discussion about motion?
I make a motion to approve the application based on staff recommendations, with the exception of number two, in that the setback be a minimum of one foot instead of two foot. And I think that's probably all, I think I have faith in that number three will be resolved, as Mr. Gee pointed out, and so that's it.
So it's number three, then, also an exception that they just work with us to get some of them?
Would we be willing to say just the max? Because he said he could get 80 inches, which would be one foot two, or just the max they can get, but at least one feet? Or did you say at least one foot?
I said a minimum of one foot.
Okay, you did, okay.
That's probably not...
That's good, that's good. Thanks. All right, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed? Okay, motion cares. Okay, 1813 Holly Street. Didn't even get through all your slides, I don't think. Okay. Okay. 1813 Holly Street. This is an application for a rear one-and-a-half-story addition to a craftsman-style house in the Lockland Springs overlay. We, or you, I should say, approved a similar plan in July of 2014. That would be an addition that set in with a hyphen and then came back to match the height of the house. The applicant has revised so that now the addition would still have a hyphen, but then would grow to be taller than the historic house as it went out toward the rear. It can be appropriate for additions to be taller than a historic house if the addition is far enough to the rear. And in the staff recommendation, you'll read that we are recommending that the right wall of the addition beyond the hyphen portion, that that right wall set in an additional two feet to reduce the massing as it would be perceived to be taller, where it would be taller than the historic house. That, obviously, that's in the recommendation. The applicant, and that's the wall that we're saying ought to be pushed in an additional two feet. Well, I'll get to that. The applicant sent some revisions that, instead of setting in the two feet, they actually think that they could reduce the height of the portion of the addition that's taller. And staff is of the opinion that the basic effect or the net effect of reducing the height is comparable to what would it be achieved by pushing in the wall. So staff finds that that revision would meet the same condition and meet the design guideline.
So Sean, just to clarify on the image here, the image on the left is what we have in our staff report.
Correct.
The image on the right is a recent revision that you guys have reviewed and find appropriate in lieu of your additional two-foot setback.
Yes, in lieu of, or one or the other, but yeah. And I have, I was about to reach for the printouts, I have those elevations if you want to see them too, I can. The conclusion, or in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the revised addition with conditions that the right wall of the upper story of the addition be pushed in two feet, or that the roof be lowered as shown in the revised elevation there. And then also that the selection of windows, doors, and a patio material are approved by staff prior to selection. With those conditions, staff finds that this project meets the guidelines for the Lockland Springs overlay. Thanks. Any other questions for Sean? Thanks, Sean. And there is an applicant here, if you have any questions for them. Would the applicant like to...
I'm here if you have any questions.
Okay. You know, just for the record, since you're here and you said that, why don't you just state your name and address, and then that way it'll be on the record you were here.
My name is Craig Kennedy. I live at 1432 Greenwood Avenue.
Okay. No questions, all right. Open public hearing? Would you like to say anything?
I have the same with me.
Okay, closed public hearing. Discussion?
I'll move approval of staff recommendation.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion cares. Next is 1414 Boscoval.
1414 Boscoval Street is an application for demolition of the existing building on the site seen here and for infill construction. This house, the existing house, dates to 1948 and does not contribute to the architectural or historic character of the neighborhood. The proposed infill is two stories and proposed to be 28 feet tall. New construction of two stories may be built in the 1400 to 1600 blocks of Boscoval where historic context is minimal. It is proposed to be 40 feet wide. Contributing buildings nearby have a ranging width from 26 to 40 feet. Here, we're sort of going in a counterclockwise way around the building. I know it's kind of hard to maybe get your bearings. The foundations will be concrete block, the cladding will be fiber cement siding, panels, and board and battent. A panel of stained wood is proposed on the front facade, the north elevation on the top there. With staff approval of windows, doors, and roofing color, the project will meet the guidelines for materials. The windows in general meet the appropriate proportion. The largest expansive wall space without an opening is about 19 feet on each side. The design guidelines state that there should be an opening every eight to 13 feet. Staff requests an opening be added in this location approximately to break up the long run of wall area on each side. The contributing context and recent construction prior to the expansion of the overlay, just to get your bearings. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the demolition and new construction with the conditions that the finished floor height of the new building shall be consistent with that of adjacent historic houses. A window opening be added to each side facade. Staff approve the selection of windows, doors, color of roofing, and walkways, driveways, and parking, and that HVAC and other utilities be located to minimize the visibility from the street. That concludes my portion.
Okay. Any questions for Paul?
I have a question about where their parking is proposed.
Same here. The site plan does not indicate intended parking, driveway, that's why we added that condition on approval of those elements.
Okay, and there is an existing alley that's improved? Is that correct?
It is, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Got something, Richard?
So we very seldom see flat roofs. In fact, they're mostly times discouraged.
I'll jump in.
This is great.
Just, I wanted to jump in if I could, because I know this looks really, really different from what you normally look at, but this, there's three or four blocks of Boscoval that were recently added to the district, and the neighborhood understood that there's like four houses on that entire three-to-four-block area that are historic. So they recognized that it would be okay to kind of meet the context of what people have been building, which is flat roof and very, very contemporary. So this would not be approved probably elsewhere in the neighborhood, but here it meets the realities of what's been built lately. And again, that was what the neighborhood wanted to see happen.
Thank you.
Have you received any feedback from the neighborhood?
We have not.
I got a question for staff, too. I know it's sort of funny, but when we say non-contributing, it's just because we say it so, you know, all the time, every day. When we say non-contributing, is that a specific year?
It is not. There are several different factors that go into determining what's historic and what's not, and that's really, you know, as you pointed out, that's what we really mean when we say contributing and non-contributing, that whether or not it contributes to the historic character of the neighborhood. But we definitely look at age of construction, we look at the historic integrity, not the, you know, how well it's built, but the integrity of the historic features. We look at its history, we look at the context, we look at a collection of factors to make that determination.
And in saying that, and you know, that neighborhood is 1940s, you know, post-war, whatever, so that seems to be a character, and I'm talking generally, when we see projects or neighborhoods, when that is really the nature of that neighborhood. And so then we go and we say you can demolish it because it's non-contributing, but is it really?
That's a really good question, because what we've done is, certainly those post-war homes can be historic, but not every single thing that's built early is. So what we've tried to do is really find where are the really good collections of well-done post-war homes, and we have some, you know, pockets in Hillsborough West, down in Belmont-Hillsborough. But these did not, were not well-done. These are not buildings that we think that at any point anybody's going to be, feel that we need to keep. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
It does. And again, seeing a flat roof versus a pitched roof is very different design, and in keeping with guidelines, that flat roof is within guidelines?
Yes, when the neighborhood was expanded, the italicized portion of the design guidelines specified that these three or four blocks could have certain things, such as a flat roof, such as a more contemporary design. Even in some cases, because the grade rises so greatly, they may even have front-loading garages, which is another thing you normally would never allow for. But here, there's really no other option for some of them. This one was fairly flat, so they didn't have to do that here.
And when was their neighborhood, I mean, when was their overlay done?
This expansion was just recently, it was earlier this year.
Okay, 2014. Okay.
Thank you.
Any more questions to staff? Okay.
No.
Okay. Would the applicant like to come forward and speak regarding this project? You're not, no applicant? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, open public hearing. Seeing none, closed public hearing, okay.
I just have a question for the staff. The wall that separates the front entry from the street seems to be sort of non-inviting, and certainly, I'm not sure there's a precedent for that type of wall. Is there any, I don't know if you talked to the applicant about this or not, but I guess it's the one thing that's sort of eating at me here, despite that this is a very different type of, you know, and modern home, is that either the wall is too high, or the fact that it goes to the side rather than, the porch goes to the side rather than out to the street, which is not typical, it sort of bothers me.
It was a conversation we had, this actually is the second rendition of this that has a more prominent entrance, but, you know, I completely agree, if you wanted them to break up that wall, maybe create an opening where the door is in the wall, or get rid of it, or lower the height, I mean, they've been very easy to work with, my guess is they would be open to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation with two additional conditions. One, that the parking be located or accessed from the, located and accessed from the alley. And two, that the applicant work with staff to make a more prominent entrance to the homes by either lowering that wall or... homes by either lowering that wall or reorienting the entrance to the porch to face the street.
Okay. We have a motion and second?
Second.
All in favor?
I have a question. Can we dictate parking?
Okay. Just one more, Tom. We had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. 805 Petway.
I'll be presenting 805 Petway, but of course, you saw in the staff recommendation, the recommendation was prepared by Melissa. She's not here with us today. She's probably watching at home on TV because she's home with her newborn baby boy.
Congratulations, Melissa.
Get to work.
The application at 805 Petway Avenue is to construct a new single-family dwelling and detached garage on the lot that's at the very western edge of the district, adjacent to the Ellington Parkway. The house that was there was demolished earlier this year. The new house, well, there's a site plan. The new house will have a form similar to that of a craftsman-style bungalow, which is a common historic house type in the area. One and a half stories with a attached port cochere projecting front porch. This form, house, and scale, one and a half, essentially one and a half stories, although grows to two stories with a rear wing and garage, which I don't have a picture of. Staff finds that the materials and form, window proportion and rhythm meet the guidelines for new construction. Staff recommends approval of this infill with conditions that the finished floor height be consistent with the floor heights of adjacent historic houses, the one to the right, that the staff verify the front setback to ensure compatibility with the house to the right. Staff approve final details, dimensions of materials of windows and doors prior to purchase and installation. Staff approve the shingle roof and metal roof color and the materials of the front porch floor and steps that, and the material of the central walkway, and also the location of HVAC units that they shall be located behind the house or on the side behind the midpoint of the structure. With those conditions met, staff finds that this infill meets the guidelines for the Greenwood Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay. Thanks, Sean. Is the applicant here? Like to, okay. Open public hearing? Okay. Closed public hearing. All right. Any discussion?
Sorry, I'll just make one comment that sometimes when we see elevations with such little detail and we see lots of conditions about needing to approve detail, it makes me wonder if the applicant has gone through this process before and whether it's clear to the applicant when those need to be approved. I know it's unfortunate when you get out there and it's built already and then you say, hey, we didn't approve these details. So if we could, just be sure to be very clear with the applicant on when that needs to occur and what needs to be approved.
Very, very good point. We do, we are now, or have been for several months, or maybe even a year, adding extensive notes to all the drawings, reiterating five-inch reveal, SDL montons, you know, all those, all those details. Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Do we make a motion that they add that?
Well, it's really just about how they work with the applicant and enforcement. So I'm not going to put a condition on it.
That's fine.
But with that, I'll make a motion we approve staff recommendation.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. So you guys will explain the preliminary SP review real quick?
Yes. As we were discussing earlier today, since we've had several incidences where someone who's trying to get an SP needs to get that property legal first before they came to you, but then they're left not knowing what you're going to do. And they only, and planning only has staff's, not rec, only has staff's recommendation, not your recommendation. So the new process is going to be, when someone has an SP, they're going to meet with us and planning at the same time. So everybody gets to hear everybody's comments and feedback. And then that preliminary, which will just be for you, a site plan and a form type of plan, will go to planning and will come to you. And so then, as they continue down the process, they are comfortable knowing what you've approved. So you're not having this situation anymore where planning and the council will approve six units and does, is that even going to work? So at least that form is going to be approved by you, and then they can come back later with all the details of dormers and windows and doors.
I'd like to add, too, that I really appreciate Robin, you, and Tim, and the rest of the staff working with planning on this and implementing it so quickly. And it could, in a way, add a step to developers, but I think.
Prevent a second step, though.
Well, that's right. I think at the end of the day, we will have people coming to this commission with clear expectations on the massing and form and what they've been entitled for at the, at planning and with their council bill.
Yeah, I agree. I think it'll help some of the confusion, so that's good.
And it, not only will help them, but it'll, you know, we've been put in a tough, some tough situations because of what has essentially been approved by zoning that may or may not, or maybe in question whether it, whether it meets our guidelines or not.
Yeah. So that's good. Okay. Paul?
The intent of the proposed SP is to create a third property at the top of the image there facing Linsley Park Drive from the two properties on Holly Street. The project meets design guidelines for setbacks and orientation. The proposed structure is 42 feet by 34 feet for a total footprint of 1,428 square feet. These dimensions are compatible with the widths and heights of nearby contributing buildings. The roof is a side gable with 712 pitch and dormers that are also compatible. The proposed design also meets guidelines for height and scale and roof form. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the proposed specific plan, finding that the project meets the applicable design guidelines for the Lachlan Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay.
How active is the neighborhood in these discussions?
It's really up to the applicant. The applicant owned, obviously owned, is a commissioner and owns the property. And, you know, we've had many, many discussions about adding a second house behind a house on these corner lots. And what we've found is when it's one piece of property, that is just, that new unit just doesn't, there's none, it's not deep enough. But when there's at least two, like they have here, we have found that then it works. Because now it's, you know, 100-foot length of a lot, which is more in keeping with the standard lots.
So can anybody just ask for an SP?
Yes.
Has this been rezoned yet?
It's in the process.
Okay.
So planning is waiting on your recommendation on this site plan and form.
And what are the guidelines planning has for granting SPs?
The planning commission really primarily looks at the community plan and looks at what the community plan says about density, about, about height, about mass. I mean, generally, those are the guiding principles that the planning commission looks at. What this gives is this gives us the opportunity to say, even if the community plan says one thing's okay, wait a minute, our guidelines, you know, limit that or are different than the community plan. And ultimately, this body is going to, is going to control bulk and height and mass, not density or number of unitsness, but the bulk regulations, setbacks, heights, and mass.
I might just add just a little something to the discussion so that you can kind of know what the legal principles are that are guiding this effort now for historic and planning to work together through this process. The Metro Code in 1740 105 sets out the conditions and the requirements for the specific plan. And one of the things that it talks about is when a property is up for specific plan and it is in a Metropolitan Development and Housing Agency, MDHA overlay, or a Metro Historic Zoning Commission overlay. And what happens? And how does the SP affect those guidelines? And I'm not going to, it's, Section C, if you ever want to look at it, it's actually, it starts, 1740 105 starts off and then goes through 1740 106. And the part that is most pertinent to what you all have before you is Section C. I'm going to read the last portion of it, which I think is the, probably the crux of it. It says, "Adoption of an SP district shall not relieve any property owner from full compliance with the adopted regulations and guidelines of the applicable redevelopment or historic overlay guidelines. Within an SP district, all developments shall be consistent with the requirements of the SP district, as well as any adopted redevelopment or historic overlay district, whichever is more restrictive." So that's, that's kind of the quagmire that people are in from time to time. And I just thought it might be helpful if you all had the background in terms of what the code provided with regard to your guidelines and how they fit into the SP framework.
Can we give you that code number again?
Yes, ma'am. Uh-huh. It's 1740 105 is the general definition of specific plan with regard to their purpose and the intent. And then the development plan, which is kind of the phase that we're going into now, is 1740 106. The one that deals most specifically with the Historic Zoning Commission is subsection C.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thanks.
And the applicant is here.
Hey, are we looking at, or excuse me, are we looking at, are we going to be asked to opine on the number of units going on an SP or just the massing of the units?
Just the massing and scale.
Okay. Applicant like to come forward and send name and address?
Thank you all for appearing this afternoon. I'm Rich McCoy. I'm the architect on this project for 1505 Holly Street. My address is, excuse me, 125 South 11th Street, Nashville, Tennessee, 37206. When we, when we were considering this, we took into consideration a lot of different things, looked specifically at the development pattern that is along Linsley Park. And one of the things we wanted to emphasize was, you know, obviously, we're here today to talk about the site plan and the planning. We will be back for design review for the structure if we, if we are approved here and at planning. One of the things we tried to do was, was if you look at Linsley Park at this same location across to the east side, it's the exact same development pattern. The houses that face Holly on that side, the three down from Linsley Park are all 100 feet deep. And then there's a perpendicular property that spans the back half of those three lots to create a new lot that faces Linsley Park. I'm not sure exactly when the development, I believe it was the 1930s when Linsley Park was developed and was part of a, probably a driveway. I think there was a larger house that used to sit up on this property. We felt like what we were doing was not, what we're creating was not bad precedent. The precedent for the development pattern is already there. Our setbacks were appropriate, given the context of the corner and the adjacent properties. Access to the property, to the north side of our property, we've created a drive space. We have, we actually have a stormwater easement at that position and felt like that was the best place to take advantage of the path for the driveway. The parking for the house would be behind the house. Obviously, overflow would come out on the drive, but the primary parking would be tucked in behind the house to keep, keep that, those, the cars and things off the street. Obviously, the shallow setback there, it's, it sets back a little bit further than the house that's on, actually on the corner of Linsley Park and Holly, but matches some, some of the other properties that go down Linsley Park. We have also met and sent information to Lachlan Springs Neighborhood Association, their president, and they've given us sign-off. We've also spoken to a couple other of the neighborhood leaders, Bob Borzak, Carol Norton, and if those may have any weight to you, for you. And we have, they've given us basically approval or consent to what we're doing. And that is it. If I can answer any questions?
I have a question on that.
Yep.
On this, since it's two lots now, so you will, with the SP, you're going to get a separate lot?
Yes.
On that? So that'll be subdivided then?
Right.
Okay.
Essentially, there'll be three lots within that property now, within the two.
All right. Thanks, Rich.
All right. Thank you.
Open public hearing. Anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay. Seeing unclosed public hearing. Any discussion? Of course, any.
Sorry, I'm going to start again. These are all in my, in my neighborhood.
This whole caseload today.
It's all East Nashville. Well, if Bob Borzak and Carol Norton approve this, I'll make the motion that we approve. But I will make the comment that, you know, this is sort of textbook, I think, what we should be doing. And we've had sort of other slightly different examples that have been before us. But I really, again, I really appreciate the staff working this out and having the opportunity before it goes through planning, before it goes through city council, to weigh in. So I'll make the motion we approve staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thanks. So we have some administrative action today?
We do. I won't go into all these details because we've talked about it for several months, you know, unless we get into it and you want me to. But this is a policy and procedures for outbuildings, attached, detached dwellings, and daddies, detached accessory dwelling units. And so we've been, again, we've talked about it for several months, so I'll just point out the things that are maybe a little bit different than what you've seen in the past. One is that there's now a minimum of at least 20 feet between an outbuilding and the rear of a home, where before it was 10 feet. The main reason the document looks different than what you've seen last time is because now each of those elements we were talking about, you see here with the design guideline that they go with. So you'll see what it looks like in the design guidelines. The third difference is that we, as a part of this, we're recommending a change to the rules of orders and procedures. That section deals with notification, and we're really, it's, only part of it's marked out, but really recommending just removing the whole thing because part of it doesn't make any sense without the other. But that is about notification and sending of agendas. And when this was written, we just didn't have the resources we do now with the website and with email. So now anyone can sign up to receive regular notices at any time. So we just felt like snail mailing a few to a select people wasn't very financially responsible or environmentally responsible. So this will save some paper and postage and printing and money. In addition, there's a requirement that we send an agenda to neighborhood presidents. But that's a tough requirement for us to meet since we are dependent on the neighborhood letting us know that contact information, because usually that changes every year, every two years. So again, now anyone in the neighborhood, president or not, can sign up to receive those agendas on our website. So we do recommend removing that entire section. And otherwise, it is what we've all been talking about for several months now.
I have a question, Robin, about the policy change or the rules change. That has nothing to do with outbuildings, daddies, duplexes, or additions, right? That's for all applications?
That was for all applications.
Okay.
But now with part C3 is somewhat, the recommendation we're making is somewhat tied to outbuildings. Because what we're saying is, let's just go ahead and put into the design guidelines that outbuildings can be as close as three feet to a property line, except for corner lots. And since that setback will already be in the guidelines, assuming that you approve that, there's no real need to have, to notice that. That's, everyone will be on notice about it. But any other setback requests would still be noticed to the adjoining property owners, abutting property owners.
Okay. So currently, we, with all applications, we notify the council member, the neighborhood president, and.
Property owner.
The owner.
Mm-hmm.
It's usually the applicant. It's usually the applicant or...
Right. And/or the owner has hired someone to be their representative, and so obviously, they know when it is.
Yeah. Have you all talked to council members about no longer receiving?
No. The truth is, we'll probably continue to send those paper, but we just didn't see the need to have that requirement in the rules of order and procedure. But we'll continue to notify council members in whatever way they request of us.
Maybe let's go ahead and approve that duplex, part P first. Is that what you're looking for? Do you look for a P? I mean, looking for approval from us or official approval? Okay.
If you feel comfortable, we could take the whole thing. Or if you don't, we can break it up.
You mean, and do P and Q at the same time? Or just P?
Yes.
Okay.
We need two different motions.
You don't, yeah, you don't need two different motions.
Legal says yes, do two.
I would do two.
Okay. So let's do the duplex one first, unless you have another question.
Sorry, is there two or is there three? Because I see that our rules and procedures as a completely separate issue that we need to vote on, is that correct?
Right. The duplex, outbuilding, and detached accessory dwelling units, although three separate entities are kind of the same thing, that they're something that's going into the design guidelines, or the rules of order and procedures is a separate document, and so two motions might make the best sense.
Okay. So can you get a motion for the duplex one?
I'll move approval.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
I've got a couple of questions. And some of the things we talked about at our workshop, and maybe it's a question, Susan, you may be able to allay any concerns, but some of the language in the guideline, in the new policy language uses the word shall and uses prescriptive numbers. While I don't think I disagree with any of the numbers, it's, you know, we're really seem to be walking the line between determining the guideline or, you know, modifying the guideline, amending the guideline versus giving guidance to the applicants. And I don't know if there's any tweaks to this that might help us stay more on the guidance side than the guideline side, but I worry that we're sort of dangerously close to amending the guidelines with these.
Before you answer that, could I jump in with one thing? I did go through and, for the most part, they all say should or, you know, some kind of word like that. Some of them, though, are reiterating the design guideline. For instance, infill duplexes shall have one or two doors, and the guidelines talk about the orientation B related to the street. But I just want to point that out.
I appreciate your observation. I think it is a bit of a tight rope that you have to try to walk by inserting language such as the italicized language. I think the key, though, is to make sure that the commission is aware and that the public is aware that the italicized language is not a part of the guideline. It is essentially a recommendation from staff as to how to treat a particular kind of case. And their recommendations on each case is going to be consistent with what they have noted in the italicized language. So I think the way we stay in a safe place, if you will, is with the knowledge that the board can and does have the authority to deviate from what is in the italicized language. And to the extent that there is an issue with regard to the should or the shall, I think that's incorporated kind of in the fact that you can deviate from that. Even though it says should or shall, again, it's not a part of the guideline. It is simply italicized language, which offers a guidance and recommendation for people who are coming to receive consultation from the staff as to what direction the commission may go. But I do appreciate your observation because I do think it is a very careful line that we have to walk to make sure that we are not de facto creating a guideline, because there is a prescribed process for doing that.
Thank you, Susan. So that clarifies it. It's not, perhaps not a legal concern, but I think there may be a perception concern of when you're reading the italicized language, despite how many qualifiers we put up at the front of the guidelines about it, that when you use the word shall, it sounds absolute. And I think our guidelines probably even use should more than they use shall, you know?
They do.
So, I mean, I would be supportive of, and, you know, I don't know that we need to go word by word here, but supportive of just sort of blanket changing all shalls to shoulds within this policy change. I don't know if there's any risk in that, Robin, from a, if there's any one that needs to be there. But I know that most of them were shoulds, but there were a number of shalls.
The shalls that are there are following the shalls that are in the design guideline they're with, but that's no big deal to change them to should.
Okay.
I would actually be more comfortable in that as well. Because these are guidelines, and it's ultimately up to us to interpret the guidelines to the commission, to the members of the commission.
And that's a really good point. We were talking about this being staff's recommendation, but really, some of it's staff's recommendation, but really, it's memorializing your decisions. And I think the five-inch reveal is one. That's not in the unitalicized portion of your design guidelines. That's in the italicized portion. But it's what you've done for many, many, many years, so you don't have to continue doing that. But that is how you've interpreted it over the years. And so that is good guidance for property owners and for applicants, knowing that that's what you're going to do again when they come in here.
So we have a motion and a, let's share another question.
Well, I was just going to ask if I could amend the motion. Is this the appropriate time to do that?
Oh, that's right. We have to, can we just add it in since there's no person here?
Wasn't he the maker? Are you the maker? Who's the maker? You're the maker. Do you accept a friendly amendment?
Yeah, friendly amendment, yes. Yeah.
Could you restate those?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's just changing the shalls to shoulds.
Yeah, I will amend my motion so that we substitute the word shall to should.
Right.
With should.
Okay. And I forgot who seconded it.
Somebody else.
I don't know if it was.
Okay. Well, we have, now we have a motion.
Well, second.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. And the next one was to change the rules of order and procedure.
I'll make a motion to adopt. I agree, but the whole notification thing to me is a little slippery and...
We may need a second before discussion since there's been a motion.
Sorry.
So I find the notification stuff a little slippery.
And I don't know if by taking stuff out, are we purposely saying that we're going to restrict the number of people that we have to?
No. Actually, the way it works now, anybody can receive notice. All they have to do is sign up to receive it. There is...
It's kind of incumbent upon people to do that.
Yes.
I may not have a computer. I mean, most people do.
Sure.
But if my neighbor's doing something and I don't know about it, or you could have gone on the website, I mean, I just...
You don't get it now, though. Everything that they're doing, all of these, keep in mind that outside of the overlays, if anybody can build a house as long as it conforms to codes, right? So that's all that's happening here. People are doing things that conform to codes. So they don't receive notice outside the overlay. They don't receive notice inside the overlays now. The only people who are really receiving any kind of extra notice were these presidents. Well, to be perfectly honest, the list is old. The presidents don't keep us up to date. Then you don't really know who to ask or how to find who the right president is. So it's not mean, it's not that less people are going to receive notice. Every single person in the metro area can receive notice if they want to. It's up to them now. It'll be up to them with this change as well. Because it's a requirement that we don't have any, we can't, we can't do it. You know, there's no way for us to know who those people are or if it's changed or...
What about the council people? I mean, it seems like there ought to be at least some kind of government...
I recommend just taking that section out and letting us work with the council people and notice them in any way that they want. You know, if we had one council person say, "I want to receive every packet," obviously, we would do that. This doesn't mean that less people get less information.
Okay. It will come in. Does it complicate this by saying, as Commissioner Fletcher was saying, is that, you know, some kind of wording that says it's on the website? I mean, does that complicate the rule, the policy?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Okay. By removing the Section B, and we're talking about that, you've commented that anybody can get these agendas because it's on the web. But do we complicate the rules by saying, okay, we're going to put a little sentence that says, "You can get it on the website"?
Well, because this is for you. This isn't for the public. So they would never see it.
I mean, I was just trying to help process that.
Except I guess it would establish a rule that ensures that we put it on the website, which you're going to do anyway.
And that is a rule. That's a rule outside of this document.
Oh.
And so we still have all of our other rules that metro requires notification. And we still do all of that.
I just want you to make you feel better about that.
And just to be clear, it's not marked out, but we really recommend the entire Section Two, because the first half is when, and if you don't have the who, you don't need the when.
The only thing that I would add to the discussion is that Section One talks about routine item review. Staff is authorized to review and approve work defined as routine items without prior review of the work by the commission. Then Section Two says, notification, staff may use the following general criteria for notifying property owners who may be affected by the proposed applications that require commission approval. This was a way for you to define which ones require commission approval and which ones you have denoted as staff. That's, okay. Well, that would be my interpretation of what you've done. So my only suggestion would be that if you choose not to do the notification part of it, is to include those items that you've identified as commission approval being required in Section One, and that being the rule. Now, I'm hearing from Robin that there may be something else at play here, so I'm going to let her speak to that as well. I'm not speaking out of turn.
You have another policy that outlines what can be staff approved. So that's not actually, not actually in this section. It's elsewhere.
But isn't, but wouldn't, are not these items here included in that policy?
That and more. It gets much more detailed.
Okay. So then, even so, I would say consider your existing policy and identify those items which you would consider to be routine items or items that you would want the commission to approve instead of staff to approve, and include that in Section One in these revisions. That would be the only thing that I would say. Because I do think that although you may have an existing policy that speaks to it in greater detail, I think that's implicit in this rule as well, so...
Maybe next time, we could see our full, just have a conversation about, I mean, it sounds sort of like a, you know, just where it needs to fall within our rules and policies.
And you already...
We don't need to get bogged down on it, but...
You already have those approved, so we can put them in here without a vote because you've already approved them. So if you want to remove Section Two and have us just administratively put in that list for Section One, it's the same difference. They're both policies that you've approved.
We want to see that before we...
Well, then why do we have them?
Because some of them are new and we don't know them all.
We probably need to be reminded.
Yeah, that's a really good point.
Then I will rescind the motion, and then you come for us with a new statement.
Then we spoke to motion down.
Right. You could, I mean, you've got a motion and a second at this point. You could rescind the motion, but you got a motion and a second. You could have just voted down or voted up.
Whatever's the, whatever's the...
Since we don't have an applicant, but...
So what is the motion?
Well, I mean, I'd hate to...
The motion wants to approve it, so now we should just vote on it.
Okay. All in favor? All opposed?
Yeah. Opposed. Okay. Motion failed.
I think we need to go back to school and find out what it is we're doing.
Okay. So where we...
Are you also voting down Section Three?
I think there's just a new motion. That was a motion to approve it as it's been presented to us, all sections here.
Yes, all sections.
So that was turned down. I would like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the elimination of Item C2 in its entirety.
To B.
It's called C, Review Policies, C2.
C2.
Notification in its entirety. And the staff's recommended edits to Item C3.
C, sorry.
Can you say that again, please?
Yeah. My motion is to remove Item C2 in its entirety from our rules and procedures and to approve staff's recommended changes to Item C3, to our rules and procedures.
Why do you want to do Number Two?
Because the first part of Number Two doesn't make any sense once there's no one to notify.
Well, I thought we were going to wait on that.
Yeah, I thought we were going to expand one to include the...
Well, we can do that later, but what Robin's saying is that we already have in our rules and procedures all the things that we have to approve and all those things that Robin or the staff can approve on their own. So I don't know that it's critical now that we add that here. I think next time we come together, we could see that list, see if we, or we could amend the motion to go ahead and add what's already in here, but I think it's redundant to do that, so...
I only have a, I just have a kind of a question statement, kind of. And that is, I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly, because I heard something in what you were saying, that it is already reflected in the rules. It was my understanding it's reflected in a separate policy outside of the rules. Is that correct?
So you said next month, we can put it in the rules.
Right. And I'm okay with that, but I just wanted to make sure we understood. It's actually in two separate documents right now. So we would be bringing what's in the current policy over to your rules of procedure, which is fine, and I agree with that. But I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
And we can deal with that next month.
Sure.
And I'm not sure we're at any risk in terms of how we proceed, right, if we go ahead and approve my motion. Is that correct?
Well, does it not, you know, confuse things when you're not approving a full document?
It's an outlaw.
Okay.
Yeah, if we want to wait that.
I mean, if you wanted to move forward today and just do Section Two, certainly you could do that, and then we could bring back for the board's review what you have approved in its entirety as a, as a single document for your review. And then you can make the, make the adjustment to add the items that are in your current policy. But the policy and how it's amended and the rules and how it's amended, it's actually two different documents, so...
So there's no risk in eliminating Item Two currently? If it's confusing, then we can wait.
Well, I understand what you're, why you're doing that. But I think the problem for a lot of us here is that we don't, we need to see what we've got before we abolish or get rid of Number Two.
I second her.
I understand.
So we're going to leave it alone until we see what we've done.
Did we second it? Did we second that?
I did. I seconded.
Okay. We got to vote on it.
That we got to. We're going to say nay.
Can't we just, can't we, I mean, okay, we can vote again. All in favor? All opposed? Okay.
We opposed.
Guys, this is killing me. This is policies, let's just...
You can tell who the movies are on this.
Let's go ahead and...
I have a quick question, sorry. Are we doing anything with our commission approval process that affects what the metropolitan approval process, not approval, notification process is?
No, we're not changing that at all.
Why are we concerned about it?
Because it sets us up to do something we can't do. So I think it'd be better just to remove it.
And just stick with what the metropolitan requires?
What metro requires us to do, yeah.
I would...
Yeah.
So are we tabling this now?
We're tabling. I'm leaving. I'm going to Denver. I've got to go pass.
Three to two, so...
Has, you know, we talked, what was the deal once when we said we were going to do everything electronically? You brought that up before. What happened? Remember, we tried that once?
Yes, we would love to still do that if people were interested. The issue was that there was only one commissioner who was interested in receiving them that way. It would save quite a bit of money. I don't remember the numbers. I don't remember the numbers.
They have a computer here, though, right? Have to bring a tablet or something to read it?
Yeah.
Well, we have it here.
Laptop.
We have it here. Yeah, it's on.
Yeah, if you want more than what's in the presentation, you would need to bring your own laptop or tablet.
But that would be spent electronically, have to bring your own laptop.
Yeah, I just think we do so much of this, and we walk it right over there.
I agree.
That, Robin, you mentioned sending full packets to some of these that get notified. Do you send hard copies to council members and neighborhood presidents?
Right now, we're just sending the agendas. My point was that whatever a council person wants, we will, you know, meet that. But since they're all online, most people just look at them there.
Well, just add that to next month when more people are here.
We're the only ones that generally that receive the full packet, right?
If it gives the board any comfort, these procedures that you have here in your rules are only found in your rules for these things. The preservation permit follows just the regular metro process for notification, and that's what these would be. The only thing that is different in terms of what the notification processes are is when you amend the guidelines themselves, the text of the guidelines. So to the extent that that gives the board any comfort in knowing what you can and can't do.
Okay, meeting adjourned.